We will now come to order for the annual meeting of the Village of Martin's Edition. I wanted to call your attention, if you look to the back of the room, you'll see a street lamp sitting there on a chair. It's not where it's going to be, it's going to be mounted.
You can pet it, it likes to be petted.
It is our second prototype.
Third.
Third, that's right, the third. It's the third prototype of LED, new LED streetlights. And for those who question the value of our consultants, without the consultant, we would have no idea, we'd have no idea where to move on this. He has come, made his measurements of the two that were up, was very unsatisfied with them, went back to the manufacturer, had them redesign it, and this is what came out of that. And so, you know, most of us have very little knowledge of streetlights, of accounting, of traffic signs and lines and so on. That's why we have our various consultants that we, who are specialized, and we pay them to do that. Having said that.
Well, let me just, if I may add, we hope to have that light installed on Bradley Lane. There's already two there. That one's going to be installed in the line, so we'll have three to compare. The ones that are there are going to be readjusted, and Scott Watson, our consultant, is going to come down. Actually, Pepco wants him to come and help install it, so they're sure they can get the lighting correct. And then he's going to provide measurements and provide the council, of course, with the measurements and the results of his evaluation of the streetlight dispersion and everything else. So, we're going to have data, good hard data, which we all love, to be able to move forward in decision-making.
In due course.
Exactly. I'm expecting within the next three, he, Scott said, within the next three weeks. But Pepco's online, they're ready for us, and they're going to do whatever we want.
So, that's moving forward. The first item of business is to approve the minutes of the March meeting and the April meeting, and we have all seen them, they've been distributed via email, and I think we've had approvals for.
The March minutes, I never, we had asked Josh to review the.
I reviewed them, I thought Arts, it's for the appropriate.
I never saw Arts.
I had given them here during the meeting.
But nobody communicated that to me, and so it's not in your pack.
Okay, it's not, no.
All right, well, I'll have Arts send them to you.
Well, to all of us, did everybody get?
No.
No, I don't think anybody got it.
Did you get, you said.
I did it at the last, at the meeting, but I didn't distribute it before the meeting.
But, I'm sorry, but Josh had wanted to listen to the recording.
Right.
We partially approved a change you made, you felt was necessary. And then, Josh, you said you had wanted to, for further review. We posted the audio, and I have not seen anything since, so maybe we should just hold off.
Right, there was an email that stands, but I guess it didn't go to the whole council. I said that I did.
Okay, oh, we'll redistribute. So, what about the April meeting?
That was circulated.
I think we got sufficient approvals.
The only one I heard from was you.
Would you like to correct the last sentence of the tree committee?
Okay, yeah, Josh just pointed out something I had missed. Change, changes were made. Changes were made. Here.
Well, you read it, and it gets an action.
The last sentence, "Changes were made," both to procedure and to burden, the burden to builders.
Second page.
On the second page of this.
Second page, okay.
The end of the tree committee report. At the last sentence, "Changes were made both to procedure and to burden to builders."
And you wanted to read?
Change, that's what I wanted, "Changes were made."
Changes.
Were made, "Both to procedure and to burden." Just insert.
Thank you, a little technical edit, appreciate that.
Okay, and given that, looked good to me. Given that, Josh, did it look okay?
I'm not sure that to burden, to builders, which might have been, to burden the builders, the burden in builders.
You changed the burden to builders.
Changes were made both to procedures and.
And to the burden on builders.
The burden, okay. Not to and on, okay, good, got it. Just a little technical change. Okay, so, everybody happy?
Yeah.
Okay, somebody want to motion that approval with changes, motion approval?
To approve, that is for adjustment.
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
I said, motion to approve.
With changes.
That is for adjustment.
Okay, okay.
Second?
Josh, did you get a second?
I'll second.
Arthur?
Aye.
Vote?
I'm abstaining since I wasn't here.
Okay, that's done. The treasurer's report, where's treasurer? And then, nice write-up in the total.
Excuse me, we have a bug in the light.
A cricket behind you.
There's a cricket, can we step on that cricket, please?
Treasurer report is very simple, our finances are on target, and we're running a surplus per usual. Perhaps the most significant thing to say is that next year's budget will have $250,000 in the designated account for sidewalk repair and replacement. But again, that's a, simply setting a huge surplus aside for a designated purpose.
John, is that a subtraction to the designated slash street sidewalk, or is that in addition to?
When it's done, it'll be a, in addition to it. So, instead of being a million, it'll be 1.25.
1.25, okay, thank you.
Okay, approve the treasurer's report?
Motion to approve.
Yes, motion to approve.
Is that treasurer's report?
Okay. Second? I'll second it.
Okay.
Vote, aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And the next item, okay, what we have done, we've done this the last few years, each of the council members will be discussing a particular area of oversight. And we will be discussing those. So, do you want to start, Gene?
Well, you don't want to start giving an overview? Isn't that what we're going to do?
Yeah.
Arthur was going to give the overview, and we're all hoping that you'll give enough of it overview that none of us have to speak.
Oh, well, I wanted to begin the overview with the streetlight. John has mentioned that we have, we have set aside a significant amount of money for capital expenditures. That includes street lighting, roads, and as you mentioned, this year, we've added sidewalks as a separate item. Problem is, right now, the timing of all of this. These have been in the budget now for several years, and the timing has been the problem. We don't know when the various utilities will finish digging up our roads, so we don't want to start to pave and then have to dig up in the middle of all that. The lights of, we've had technical issues that we're working through, and then when we get the paving done, we can also start working on the sidewalk. So, these are big expenditures that have been sitting here in the budget. We've been adding to it, not knowing how much it's going to cost. And so, we're really looking forward to getting all that done and off, off our, off the deck, so that, so we'll be done with it. The, otherwise, I think things have been going well. I want to talk, get to my colleagues here to talk about, you want to talk about trees, tree committee?
Why don't we follow the agenda?
Okay, what was?
Because that's how I have my notes.
Okay, oh, okay, right.
So, if you don't mind, let me start with operations. I was trying to figure out what was the greatest challenge this year, and actually, I came up with three things that were pretty competing. Actually, there's many, many things that compete more than three, but I thought I picked the three big ones. I think the winter snow and ice that we faced this year was pretty rough, particularly in the face of the loss of our contractor, Mark Payton. And I think we were very fortunate to, at the last minute, pull out of the woodwork a great guy to do.
What happened to him?
Huh?
What happened to him?
Oh, he's still.
He's still?
Yes. Rolling Acres was able to.
Literally, at the last minute, the snow was coming.
Yes, at the last minute. Rolling Acres was able to step in, they had the equipment, and they did, I thought, and actually, I had nothing but wonderful things about them. I think that was one of the first big challenges. I think another one that we continue to see is the need for continuing infrastructure upgrades, and I think we all see it as evidenced by our streets. Also, our construction projects that have, we've got a lot of tear downs and a lot of replacements. So, these three items pretty much compete with each other for which one's at the top of the list, exactly. I thought I'd try to go over in a little bit more detail some of the infrastructure. It would pick each one of these important areas. And water lines have been upgraded on all but four streets. The remaining streets are Bradley, Quincy, Raymond, and Melville. Originally, I worked with WSSC to try to negotiate the inclusion of the area west of us, east of us, I'm sorry, in that project. They wanted to work with, find a circle to get them to work with us to make sure the water lines were, but that, it turns out, it didn't work out. So, eventually, I just recently heard from WSSC for sure, they are not including the other section of the project, and it's now going to become only our work, and they're going to take care of us. I am working, trying to negotiate sewer line.
Come in. Sewer line upgrades at the same time, so that once they have the street open, they can also replace the sewers. Not happy at that suggestion, because it's expensive for them, but I, it's something that I believe they need to do, and I have my fingers crossed that they'll actually go along with us. So, one of the reasons why the streets haven't been replaced is because both there and as well as other places, we have sewer line
work that has yet been scheduled, and water line work, at least to the south end.
Can I interrupt for one second? You have a big box.
There's one behind.
There's one right over there.
How about the director behind you?
That's your work.
And we have your jacket.
Yeah. If I have a bunch of burdened data, I have to.
Washington Gas, we've had five streets that have gas line replaced, and I am confident that many other of our streets need gas line work, and I do not want to, it's been my recommendation to the council, that we not repair, mill, and overlay the streets until we're sure. That everything that can possibly be done for our infrastructure has been done. I just recently had Washington Gas rep in here because of an issue we had at Dead End Del Field, and I pushed them to please talk to the bosses at Washington Gas and do what they can to get us the, if it's possible, to get us the money in their budget to upgrade our gas lines, because our gas lines are old and we're having issues all the time. Pepco, I think everything's been really good with Pepco, they've been very responsive to all sorts of things. I think the service has been good, they've removed the poles that we need to remove. We have only one more street that needs upgrade, and that's Dead End Del Field. The next area that I sort of thought was important to touch upon was kind of what are some of the specialized tasks. So, after we take the infrastructure, let's get, let's squeeze down and see what are some of the little things that we need to deal with. One of the things that the council just recently approved was the street signs, and having them once reviewed and upgraded, you know, it sounds very mundane, but it's very, very important. Some of the other specialized tasks that go on during the year is construction projects management. As everyone knows, the tear downs and the replacement of the houses has been pretty significant, we had, as well as you, we put on top of that your active projects, even from simple things like fences, that is so time-consuming, to slightly more elaborate front porches and additions up to tear downs. In 2015, we have 24 active projects underway. In 20, did I say 2014? It says I'm 2015. In 2014, we had 33 active projects, and they tend to roll over, and in 2013, we had 34. One of the changes I've seen is we've gone from sort of incidental changes like fences and back porches and stuff like that, to the tear downs. That's been the biggest project the last year has been, I think we had six or seven tear downs. It's been quiet recently, so I don't know where it's going to go on that. But, the other sort of specialized task is working with the utilities, I mentioned that ahead, but I've really gone out of my way to coordinate with, with them, and I think the goodwill and assistance that we got out of them has, has been very much to our advantage. Another sort of specialized task is maintaining and advancing our technology over the course of the year. Certainly, the additional technology requires much more frequent attention than it used to. We recently upgraded our website over the course of the last year, I hope everybody, oh, everybody in the council certainly has seen it. I hope the residents have seen it and appreciate it, and we welcome your comments at any point to say, hey, we could do something better, or you're missing something. We absolutely always want to hear that. We've upgraded all our computers and all our computer programs this year. We improved a recording and application system. We introduced audio recordings to our website. And actually, I have to say that Bill Cathcartwood deserves a lot of credit as our complimentary technology man who donates his time to this village to do that work, that he deserves a lot of credit. He also makes use of the General Dynamics discount, am I allowed to say that?
Nobody else can get it.
But it's even better than our municipal discount, so we're very grateful to him for that. We also upgraded our village survey and our ARC GIS program that maintains that survey. We work with the state highway administration and other state and county officials on important things, from simple things like Brookville Road and Taylor Street intersection, which we're hoping to get a good response from the state on, as well as county programs. New services and programs we put in place this year, our community policing program stands out as a new and terrific service initiative, as far as I'm concerned. I mentioned the use of a new contractor for snow removal and our continuing efforts to perfect our LED streetlight, which, her name is Bertha, we all, we named, she arrived today, we named her today. So, we look forward to seeing that and the results of that effort. And actually, if this works, if this prototype, this will be, we will be the first town to have this prototype put up, and there are so many other towns. I got an email today from Somerset saying, who's your consultant? And we hear that you have got the prototype we all want to see. So, let's keep our fingers crossed that we're alone leading the pack on this one. The constant contact, I think you've all seen our constant contact, which I think is terrific. We're perfecting it, it's our first couple of times. Beth is our technology guru on a day-to-day basis, she's busy with somebody else, and she is really the one that's mastered that. We're looking at Facebook and Twitter also to introduce that and add that to our collection. One of the things that we've been dealing with, our consultant, Calvert Design, on this, we're going to have to find some volunteers to help with this, because certainly, the staff here can't handle it, but definitely being advised to follow up on that. New services and programs also include our butterfly garden and our dirt committee, who maintains our butterfly garden, we're very grateful to them for the beauty they've added to that. Community support activities during the course of the year, I think we've done a lot of really cool stuff. I think these activities support and build a stronger and much more cohesive university, community. Man of Food donations, where are Linda and Dick? I guess they're downstairs collecting the rest of... Linda and Dick Kirsten have just been outstanding, and our Man of Food program is modeled by surrounding towns. Everybody wants to be like Martin's Editions, because we collect more food and do more things, and it's really them. Whisk Office supports them, but the Kirstens have been just wonderful on that front. We've teamed up with Montgomery County's Community Services Center, and we are now able to grant service hours to communities, to county students, and offer volunteer opportunities to our residents through the county and get service hours. Some of the other things, I know you've all seen our holiday fun and toy drive, I know it doesn't make, doesn't feel like Christmas right now, but it's been significant, and every year, we've seen the donations there grow, and we were able to give them both to BCC Rescue Squad as well as to the Fire Department. Good, several, several truck carloads full of. You all know, we introduced a wider circle to our pre-bulk pickup, and it has been a tremendous success. Wider Circle is so happy with us. It is a routine now, people know in the, in the town, although we try to put in the newsletter and put it out on the website, we always have it on the website, but that people now are getting used to this as a routine thing. Heavy trash equals a wider circle, and what can I donate? And there, we actually helped work with Wider Circle to create a model of communication and backup and follow-up, and they've adopted our model and are using it with other organizations, with the feather in our cap. The other thing we've initiated is the VMA Lending Library. I think you've all seen the books outside, and we need to get some people to be more actively involved, because our books are beginning to pile up. And then, we're also really pleased that we've built very strong links with Chevy Chase at Home, Live and Learn Bethesda, the Chevy Chase Library, and the Chevy Chase Historical Society, to try to keep them tied into what it is and what we offer as a community to our residents, whether it's the listserv or putting it on the website. Then, of course, there's always the community events, like the Halloween Party, the celebration of our incorporation. The other thing that we've done that I think is really cool is we are members of the county's Emergency Operations Center, and it requires monthly training on my part. I have to, every month, be trained, and I have an opportunity to go and take additional classes, which I do. And the real advantage of this is, in a case of a catastrophe, which is my greatest fear, because we're members of the EOC, we can pull in the strength of the county, of its department, of its transportation department, of its police forces, because we are there and on top of it. We get all the alerts, we get asked to come online and watch the operations center. We have access to the weather maps, and it's, the other good thing about that is, we are, or I think the thing that we can put a feather in our cap is, we and Chevy Chase Village are the only two municipalities down here who do this, yes, who follow it up.
Doing hurricanes, the alerts are coming out.
Yeah, well, absolutely, and we get them, we are, then, we can access all the information. Then, at the end, I swear I'm getting to the end, guys, I'm sorry, but the routine daily tasks of operation include the supervision and management of the garbage recycling and waste collection. We are in the process of rebidding our garbage contract as we must, because we, it expires at the 30th of June. So, those bids, those RFPs have been sent, and we are expecting replies, we hope, by the 15th of June. We hate for somebody not to want to rebid that contract, because we wouldn't have garbage collection. Our trees, we take care of, we plant them, we prune them, we don't have too much more room for more trees, but we, we keep our eye on it and hope that we'll, anything that dies, we'll quickly replace. Street and sidewalk repairs are awaiting the completion of some infrastructure improvements that we talked about before, and we're also awaiting, hopefully, the ability to deal with the tripping hazards. And then, streetlight maintenance, it's getting worse. We, I've seen steadily an increase of monthly outages and reports I have to do to Pepco. They're very good, Pepco's great now.
But they're burning out.
They are, and Pepco's turning them around very well. They notify me that they got my request, that they did it, but they're burning out very, very frequently.
Wait, let me interrupt. One of the advantages of the LED lights is that they have lifetimes of 10,000 to 20,000 hours, not a year. So, that hopefully would go away.
My final remark is, in terms of communications with the world outside of, although Martin's Editions is a part of that, there are almost 32,000 emails in my inbox archive, thousands of my immediate inbox archives, thousands more populate the archives, the older archives, and the daily additions to that file sometimes get close to 75 emails a day, of which I estimate only, almost 90% require review, I mean, they stop, hit the delete button, and at least 75% require a response and long-term follow-up, many adding a very complex task to the existing list. Email has changed the world, but not necessarily always for the good. And that concludes my remarks.
Yes.
Okay?
I want to say, that's an excellent report. I think we really owe you a debt of gratitude, Gene, for your excellent work this year.
Thank you, John, that's very nice.
Seconded and thirded.
Fourthed. Thank you, John.
Bill, I think you're, do you have anything to add to that?
Oh, I can talk about my children.
You can talk about what a problem.
One of the interesting things with the tear downs is the new construction, that it is contemporary but respectful of the existing buildings. So, it doesn't look fake or it doesn't discard what's already there, with the one exception of Del Field, which is going to be a strikingly modern but energy efficient, which I think is also a contribution. So, I'm pleased with the way the regulations have been interpreted for the house's design. The water problems, I blame on the county for when they invented the system, which consisted of simply run everything down to Rock Creek Park. Obviously, an inadequate solution. So, the water problems, which are spread throughout the community and need attention, require coordination between the Village of Martin's Edition, Chevy Chase Village, the county, and whatever, well, probably also the state, because we really have to start with the problem of Brookville and the flow down. So, we need to move towards an inter-agency collaboration.
That's it?
Yes.
Good, thank you. Mention on the water, the county, as Bill mentions, the county's storm sewer system, from what I understand, are not accepting any new link, any linkages, link-ins from, from problem areas in the village. They said they're already up to capacity, but you, I think you convinced them, didn't you convince them after they said not?
For Quincy Street, yes, yes, we did, yeah, a little sweet talking.
Right. So, the county said, no more links into the sewer system, it's already overloaded. We had a particular hotspot that Gene was able to convince them to.
The whole block.
The whole block.
That's right.
To, to accept a link into it as a partial solution. John, you've already talked about financial matters, anything to add?
There's really nothing to add. Our finances are excellent.
Good.
We all should be so fortunate.
Right. And Tiffany, volunteer, volunteer activities is a very important part of the village.
So, Gene touched on a lot of things, internal and a little bit, but we have, we have a lot of folks who help contribute to making the village go around. And just a few things, committees, we have both the formal, recognized by the council and appointed by the council, and then those that are kind of volunteer, the election ethics committee, who's clearly hard at work today, Ted Stoddard, Frank Correll, and Steve Trower. The tree committee, we've been hearing, their report is coming, that's Paula Goldberg, Chris Fleming, Mike Zalinski, Ed Novak, Arthur and Josh. We have our informal welcome committee, Judy Sterrell, Lisa Single, Bert Lieben, Lieben, and Bill Levitt, myself. And then, the dirt committee, which Gene mentioned earlier.
What's that?
Tell them what they do.
The butterfly garden at the corner of Cummings and Brookville, and then also the watering out here in the front. And that's Bernie Stavall, and I think Mike Zalinski are the two most regularly contributing members of the committee. And then, the other, you know, the service opportunities here, as Gene mentioned, you know, manna with Dick and Linda, and then we have the community service directory online, Bill, our IT man, and just Dan Gardner with the tree supervisor, and then also the fire board contributors, who are two, two to three representatives in the village. So, lots of other folks doing things, beautifying and just contributing.
It takes more than a village to make a village. Josh, trees?
The tree. So, the tree committee was formed.
Wow. What happened? Go ahead.
The tree committee was formed a year ago, and ever that passed, the six members have met frequently, looking at the village trees, private property trees, and the health of the village, motivated by, I think, the reconstruction brings concerns. The committee has met with subject matter experts, with the tree committees in other towns, with village managers elsewhere. It's really done an extraordinary job of preparing a very detailed report, requiring months of editing, apparently, but I'm optimistic that those edits will be completed.
Soon.
Soon.
Very soon.
As was reported in the minutes last month.
Yes.
And there will be recommendations, about the reports on the health of the trees in the community, the prospects for the future, considering their constructions, and what the village could potentially do to maintain and improve the canopy.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So, moving on, we have two or... So moving on, we have two or three, I don't know how we count them, two ordinances to consider for the last, they've already been considered in the past, and now we are bringing them up for the final consideration. One is the budget, and another is the tax rates. Let me just go over the, John has talked about the budget. The budget for next year is really kind of boring. It essentially continues what we've been doing. John mentioned that one major item is sending aside specific funds for sidewalks. The other thing, simply recognize when costs have been higher or lower than we had expected. Now, you might, for example, notice that the budget item for, for police is going down, but that's from the budgeted amount.
Don't tell.
That's from the budgeted amount. The actual expenditures will be going up.
I haven't told them that yet.
Oh, oh, shit.
Excuse me. Did you sign in? Excuse me. Did you sign in?
Thank you, Bill.
So the, we were actually, would like to spend more on the police, given, given their time constraints.
Actually, you know, the reason why that happens is because we overbudgeted.
Last year.
Because so much of the budget is really guesswork when we're even at this stage. What, what do we think it's going to cost us? And now, with a year of experience under our belt, we know what our workers' compensation and what our insurance and all this kind of stuff. So it's really not that we're being promoted.
Right. I wanted to mention that because if you looked at it and said, oh, God, we're cutting back on the police, we're actually going up. It's just that the, what we had budgeted was a guess last year. Other than that, the revenues look solid. The spending every year has been coming in less than we've been budgeting for. In total, there's always an item or two that's higher. But I think that in general, the budget is very conservative and doesn't change very much, except for the sidewalks from, from the current year. So I would like to introduce again, or, how should I say that?
Sidewalks issue, that's just simply a designation of existing surplus monies, now nominated sidewalks.
Right. So.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt the budget. This is the second time we've done this. So this will be the final.
It was introduced at the April.
It was introduced before, a certain amount of time has to pass before you do it again. And it is actually required by our charter that we pass the budget by March, by May 15th. So does somebody want to introduce?
I'm sorry.
You can do them both at once, too.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
Technically, technically, the tax rate should come first.
Oh, okay.
Because you have to have the money to spend before you spend it. But if you want to do them together, we can do both the tax resolution and the budget resolution, only making a note that the taxes are unchanged, tax rates are unchanged.
Tax rates are unchanged from this year. You will notice, if you look at the projected revenues, the revenues are going up, projected revenues, a bit. And that comes from the county or the state's assessment of, of what's happening to values, new houses, tear downs, and they come, I don't know how they do it, but they come up with an estimate for every municipality of what they expect the property, total property assessments to be. And so that is what is causing our estimated revenues to rise slightly.
Not changes in tax.
We are not changing the tax rate. The other thing that is in this tax resolution is that we are making the personal property tax the same rate as the business, the business property tax, the same.
Right, right.
As the other, other property.
Right. Commercial rates will be equivalent to the.
The general rate.
Right, right.
So for clarity's sake, resident taxes are not changing.
Resident taxes are not changing. Commercial rate is going to be the same as the residential rate. So we have, first, a resolution to approve levying tax on certain real and personal property. Will somebody want to introduce that?
That's Resolution 4-15-1.
Right. 4-15-1.
Somebody want a motion?
A motion to adopt.
Steve Revenu.
I second it.
To adopt.
To adopt. And as I said, this is the second time we've gone through this.
John, did you make that motion?
Yeah.
And Bill seconded it, okay.
And so it's up for a vote.
Aye.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
All right, next.
The second item is Ordinance 4-15-2 to adopt a budget for the fiscal year, which is what I would just been talking about. And since I've been talking about it, I'll move that we adopt the budget for the coming fiscal year.
I second that.
We have.
A politician here, okay. Who gets that second?
Okay.
John.
Treasure, treasurer gets the second.
And the vote?
Okay.
Aye.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay, and.
You opened up to contributions, I think, and.
Action tax rate, yes. Okay, now we have open to comments and contributions, and let me ask anyone who wants to say, we have a microphone up here at the small podium, for the sake of the recording and online. If you'd just come up to the, to the microphone, identify yourself and make your statement.
Steve Schmal, Summit Avenue. And I'm not making this statement simply to draw things out until we get to the election returns. I promise to be relatively brief. First of all, I think that the village's infrastructure is in probably as good a shape as it can be at this point. I would make two comments on this. One is with respect to street lighting. I certainly hope that this prototype can be put in place. We have waited quite a long time. I think it's been worth the wait in that the technology seems to have improved, the costs seem to, if anything, have dropped. But I think there is a danger in waiting too, too long. The community definitely needs better lighting. We have the money budgeted, and I would certainly hope that during this coming fiscal year it gets spent. Streets.
I'll second you on that.
Streets, I think, is a more problematic thing because, as has been pointed out, we don't want to tear up or repave the streets only to have one of the public utilities tear it up immediately afterward. But the reality is that we can't predict when any of the utilities will necessarily start the next round or have to do something. I think that there needs to be some sort of a commitment on the part of the incoming council to make a decision based on the best information we have, whether the work can be done this coming year or not, and only postpone it further if there is really good information, one that there will be this round of work and likely not another round to follow soon thereafter. It's an awkward situation. There are no easy answers. The streets obviously are not in as good shape as we would want. Everybody agrees with that. Everybody knows that the, one of the major reasons is that there has been a lot of work, especially with WSSC, considerable amount Washington gas.
I think you have to agree that our pothole repair has been a lot better than the districts.
Oh, yes. And, and some of the temporary patching work that's been done as a result of some of the more short-term things has been done certainly well. I have no problems with that. I may be fortunate, Summit Avenue, I think, is in maybe better shape than, than many of the streets, but we've been blessed probably because we've had less in the way of dig up. The one thing, I was going to comment on other things, but now that the tax rates and budgets have been passed, there's no need to comment on that. One thing I was kind of struck with, and I'm not sure it needs any sort of long discussion, but I was confused when I looked at some of the budget figures. Not so much what the actual budget was for 14 or the actual budget was for, approved budget for 15 or the proposed budget for 16, but there's a column in here that's fiscal 15, actual until the end of February. And some of the figures frankly make no sense to me. And the one I would particularly call your attention to is line, or item 5224 toward the bottom of the sheet, enforcement and oversight, professional fees for that. What it shows is actual for 14 is a little over $14,000. Budgeted for 15, $40,000. Spent in the first eight months, $132.99.
That's an easy answer to that. He is late in sending in his invoices.
My God, how late could it be?
It's money out of his pocket.
I know. But it makes, I think it makes budgeting very, very difficult if you don't have any notion of when these bills are necessarily going to come in. I would only encourage that there be more effort. Maybe there's been quite a bit.
We, we keep track of his hours.
And there are several other items that are somewhat similar, and they're probably slow bills, slow billing.
Slow billing, right.
The only other one, and I've been a stuck record on this one, and I will continue probably to be a stuck record, is I'm a little bit surprised, even with interest rates on accounts being as low as they are, and they're generally running about 0.15%, sometimes a little lower, 0.1, maybe as high as 0.2. The figure that's reported here for what's actually been realized, $558.74, when we have, I believe, in our various accounts somewhere in the neighborhood of $2 million, strikes me as low. I don't know whether there's anything that can be done to improve it. I think from my personal household budgeting, if I had that kind of return, I'd really look somewhere else. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. One other item on the, on the lights, one of the things that fell into place just recently is that the electric company, Pepco, just established their, their rates for LED lights. Until then, they, there wasn't a structure to fit it into.
Would they be higher or lower?
For LEDs, they're much lower. The light consumption, the energy consumption is considerably lower, and the maintenance costs are lower. As I said, the, on the average, the lights that we have have to be changed on the average once a year. This will go years and years. Any other comments? Yes, sir. This name and street.
I'm Tom Van Dijk in Turner Lane. About 5230 legal. We haven't been sued. I'm glad. But being out there tonight and voting, there are some real tripping hazards in the brick sidewalk in front of the stores. It looks cruddy to fill those gaps with asphalt, but I would take cruddy-looking filled yaps way higher than a lawsuit because some lady breaks an ankle. I really recommend filling those gaps. Brick sidewalks are aesthetically attractive, but they sure are a maintenance pain. I fought that when I was in, and lost, when I was in DC Public Works, and please, let's not build anymore brick sidewalks.
Is that, that's a private, turns out to be a private sidewalk there. It's not a, it's not part of the village right of way. And when you talk about then the design aesthetics, it's, it's not ours.
And we didn't, we aren't responsible for that bad implementation of the design.
But it's just inherent in brick sidewalks.
We really do try to work with the owner here to get him to maintain it. So I appreciate your comments, and I'll rag him a little bit more, but you're, you're absolutely right.
I'm ever so glad to know that we aren't going to get to maintain one.
We have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John McDonald, Summit Avenue. If I understand correctly, we have not been able to get a timetable from Washington Gas Light about making repairs to the, their infrastructure, their pipes, and it seems to me as a public utility, I'm wondering whether they have any legal obligation to furnish a timetable.
Bill, it's very complicated.
If we took them before the public service.
Service commission. My, go ahead. Sorry. My most recent conversation with one of the higher-level representatives from Washington Gas, which was within the past week, was that they specifically were going to push, again, for Martin's Editions, to see if they can get us in their next budget, which is going to be FY '16, to see what kind of change, what kind of pipeline replacement we can get. It's really a shell game, and it's a trading-off game between municipalities, between what they've got money for. It's not, just not simple. And actually, in a lot of ways, the more gas line problems we have, the better our chances are. Now, we just had, we've had a couple of explosions, a couple, we have, we have Raymond Street, Shepherd Street. Most recently, we had a, had some problems over on, on Delfield Street, Dead End. And Washington Gas has been most responsive, but the best thing is for, for them to see that our infrastructure, to be reminded that our infrastructure really needs to be updated. I don't know what else to do but to stay on top of it, and they promised me they'd get back to me.
What is the remedy at the Public Service Commission? What could they?
Well, they are allowed to prioritize their projects based on need, and I, I haven't looked at the issue. I can't tell you whether we are fairly prioritized or not.
We're old, though. As a matter of fact, I have a sample gas line over there, if you'd like to see what it looks like. They gave it to me as a prize. And they're replacing the old steel pipes with plastic now, but because their lines are old, our lines are old, we, that keeps us at the top of the list. Whether ours are the worst and therefore keep us floating at the highest, I don't know. We, I don't know the answer to that, but I believe me, I stay on top of them as much as I can. And I actually have found them very pleasant to work with. Washington Gas has been very, very responsive. They really have been, you know.
It's like, they're not printing in the new stuff, but they're very responsive when the old stuff breaks.
Right. Even, because when you say we have got a gas leak, I mean, basically, you can imagine, it's a lot worse than having a water line break. And, and they do respond to that, so.
I want to correct your station.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. Iron pipes. Let me correct you. For the record, iron pipes.
Iron pipes. Any other?
Thank you.
Comments? Yes, sir. Again.
I don't want to do this. I got oil heat.
A name again.
Which means.
For the record, we need your name.
Tom Van Dijk in Turner Lane. I got oil heat. That means I'm paying something more than twice the rate for heat that I'd pay for gas, and doubtless I will sort of shift over. But shifting over means replacing the line from the house to the.
To the street.
Meter, and that may mean a digging up of the street. I really don't want to dig up the street. I wonder if there's any way to encourage Washington Gas to get all the locations where they're going to have to dig up to enlarge the pipe, to get a new, enlarger pipe so they can support heat, so that people at least know that, hey, it's going to have to be dug up. Why don't you do it beforehand, not after?
Tom, the way the process has worked on the streets that Washington Gas has done it, they replaced the main down the middle of the street, okay? And we're going from a low-pressure gas to high-pressure gas, okay? So that allows them to use a much narrower plastic, and then they make the connection to every house, from the main to the house, Washington Gas pays for. They will even go into your home and change out what they need to change out in order to supply your house with gas. We just got to get them to do it. They've done it, they've done it on Cummings, they've just recently completed it on Quincy, and they've done it in a couple other streets. I can't remember exactly which one right now, but that, when they do it, the whole street will go, and every house will have its gas connection upgraded.
Up to now, so that's, that's done before we repave.
Absolutely. Well, that's been my, my policy all along, it's been, let's not repave. Actually, I think the streets, the condition, we can call it our natural speed bump, you know? Keeps the speed down on the streets. But basically, that's how they work. They do the, the main down the street, they change it from low pressure to high pressure. You get better pressure to your house, and they actually go from house to house.
Okay.
Okay? That's why it's so expensive. That's why it's so expensive, that's why they don't have so much money, what?
Am I remembering correctly as well that they will then add the cost for the connection to the front door to the street?
Yes, they will actually pay for that. They'll even come in and make changes that you need to have made to your house, a connection inside the house, to, because they want to make sure it's safe, that's really why they're doing it. They want to make sure you don't have an old furnace, they don't want to make sure you're jury-rigging something because they realize the responsibility they have not to blow you up. Is that on the record that I?
So this, this will all get done before they turn the street over to us as finished, and now you can pave?
That's right, right, but they'll help us pave.
Steve, before you can, see if anybody else? Anyone else? Okay, Steve.
Steve Schmal, Summit Ave, I wanted to just follow up on what Mr. Van Vechten had just said. My understanding, and I may be incorrect in this, is that essentially we're looking at the street renewal project as being a village-wide project. Has any thought been given since it appears that substantially work has been done on water and gas on a few streets to attacking those? Obviously, economy of scale would suggest that we get a bigger bang for our buck if we can do it throughout the entire Martin's addition, but if the prospects for doing that might be two or three years down the road because of the uncertainties, especially with Washington Gas, maybe would it make some sense to look at the streets where gas work has been recently completed, where WSSC has done its most recent round, and try to tackle those streets?
Yes.
Except there's one missing component, and that's sewer. Our sewer lines are as antiquated, because obviously it was all the same time, you know? You're putting it in, you got to take it out.
And the sewer is the county's responsibility, the sewer?
No, the county, the sewers are WSSC.
Also WSSC.
Yes.
So both water and sewer.
Yes, water and sewer is WSSC.
Where do we stand with the sewer work?
It's been very individual, and as a matter of fact, the south end of the village work on Bradley, Raymond, Melville, and Quincy Street, the gas line on Quincy's been done. Originally, WSSC had intended to change out the water lines, and they were pushing to do the sewer lines at the same time, until Pinehurst Circle area reneged on easement agreements, and so they backed away from that, and they're going to give us our water improvements. They didn't really want to, but they're going to give them to us, and I've been pushing for them to also, you know, you got the street open, let's do the sewers at the same time. So it's really been some negotiation, and you know, they're slow because they've got RFPs, they need engineering designs, they need to start all over again. When you drop out somebody like they did with Pinehurst Circle, they have to completely reconfigure the whole program, so that would be, that south end would be a good test, see if we can't get gas, because we got gas on Quincy, but if we can get water and sewer taken care of at the same time, maybe it'll help everything else flow from there.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, you got to get over that.
This, this is where it really got complicated, because the water lines coming in also dealt with, as Gene said, Pinehurst Circle, which is in the district, and the, there were easements going through everybody's backyards, and nobody wanted to have them dig up their backyards. And so there was a project, the design, the money was there, and they had to back away from that, I mean, starting over from scratch and coming up with a whole new project.
I just wanted to add, the easements weren't considered adequate by the utility.
Well, they weren't wide enough.
Right.
Right, yeah. Well, I would suggest that if we have no more questions, let's take a little break until we get election returns in.
Can we adjourn? Yeah, we can adjourn.
We can adjourn the meeting.
But just don't talk about public business.
Okay, shall we, shall we?
We have a quorum, we're going to ask our tech man.
Adjourn or?
Do recess?
Yes, please, adjourn. We can adjourn, if you want to.
Recession, recess?
Are we doing a march and have a march and recess, or just the chair?
Do we need a motion to recess, or we just recess? We are hereby recessed.
That's right.
Right, okay, I need some water. Yeah, we are resuming session only to adjourn, we have just been informed by the election committee that they expect to take at least another hour of counting. They had, how many, where's my?
They're about one-third of the way through the ballot.
3:40, I think.
300, how much did he say?
I believe he said 310.
310, and so it's going to be a while, so I suggest at that this moment that we adjourn the meeting, and anyone who wants to hang around can.
They can't because unless somebody's got a key, I'm going home, so.
I need a key, I forgot.
You want to stay here?
I'll stay.
We'll get there, yeah, hold on a second, so we'll adjourn?
Hold on, we have, we have.
I have a question, Mark Leener Thorne.
Yes.
What is the process for announcing, given the hour delay? What's the process for publicly announcing results?
We, well, tomorrow you will send it out via the email address, but email. But if you want to hang around.
It'll be publicly announced, and that's pretty much it this evening, publicly published tomorrow?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know publicly who they'll announce it to.
Well, whoever's here, right?
Yeah.
I'm not going to say for.
No, you don't, you go home, I'm going to go, I have to go, I'll get my keys.
Well, I can give you my key.
Okay.
You're going to stay around for another hour for the outcome? Is that what you want to do?
We're out of wine.
Sorry.
Out of wine? Okay.
The residents knocked everything out.
Yeah, right, they cleaned us out. I'm sorry.
If we, if someone's staying, don't we have an obligation to announce tonight where some people know and others don't know?
Well, how would we do, how would we do that?
Well, someone could, after, after the election committee certifies to whatever council member is here, that council member could post it on the unofficial.
You have to announce it. You can go to the street if you like.
Can we hang out on?
You're a housewife at home, yes.
Hang out on the speaker.
That's right, you know? My question would be, Ron, my question would be, why does it have to be announced tonight in any fashion?
Because people are anxious.
Okay, actually.
There's no legal requirement.
I have a requirement, okay. Decide what you want to do.
Yeah, I, I want to, I will adjourn and then unofficially hang around.
Okay. Well, you're taking a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, so a motion to adjourn.
There are 300 people who voted, and one option to inform them at the earliest opportunity is to post it on the list, sir.
Yes.
Which is not normally what's done, but given this circumstance, it seems appropriate.
I think so.
Well, anyone can do that.
Anyone can do that.
We're an initiative anyway after we learn results.
But somebody has to be here to certify, somebody to accept that certification. So we're still working on this motion to adjourn.
Okay, I submit a motion to adjourn, anyone want to second that? Anyone opposed to that?
We, and you could certify when they walk in here and they say, here are the election results.
Do I have to sign the form? I don't recall, no. They, they just say.
Typically, it's done as they submit a signed certificate, but.
The committee will know what to do. Okay, so a motion to adjourn was made by Arthur. We have a second by Josh, and can I have a vote?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. One in favor.
Sure.
Okay, so the meeting is adjourned?
Yeah. Okay.